glance you might not understand what he is talking about but there are other scripture portions that we look into what Paul is talking about here so he has not ceased to pray he is thankful to God for all the qualities that they possess and now he presents a prayer request he asked God that the church of Colossae may be filled with the knowledge of his will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding so what does Paul mean by this a similar prayer request we can see in Ephesians chapter one verses fifteen to seventeen so in there Paul says for this reason I too having heard of the faith in the Lord Jesus which exists among you and your love for all the saints do not cease to give there also he doesn't cease to give thanks in Ephesians one fifteen to seventeen while making mention of you in my prayers and in verse seventeen Paul says that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ the Father of glory may give to you a spirit of wisdom and of revelation in the knowledge of him a similar prayer request Paul is making in Ephesians chapter one verses seventeen that he praised to God how he asked God to give a spirit of wisdom and of revelation in the knowledge of him so what is this knowledge and wisdom philosopher or what is the difference between knowledge and wisdom I think I've mentioned in some other place a philosopher once mentioned knowing that tomato is a fruit is knowledge and not to put in fruit salad is wisdom right so you know many things as people we all know many things and that's why the philosopher said knowing tomato is a fruit is knowledge but not to put in fruit salad is wisdoms you don't put tomato in a fruit salad because it's a fruit because in fruit salad there are only certain fruits that go with it right you cannot put tomato just because it's a fruit so that is the example that this philosopher mentioned about the difference between knowledge and wisdom so as believers in Jesus Christ we all need to have this knowledge and wisdom we know many things but wisdom is that we don't apply all that we know wherever we want or just because we know many things just because we want to say many things we don't say everything everywhere right we need to apply God given wisdom which God has poured out into our hearts so remember in this context Paul is talking about knowledge and wisdom they all have this knowledge they have been learning the word of God but God just doesn't Paul doesn't just want them to be filled in the knowledge but he wants them to fill be filled with wisdom and understanding how to apply that knowledge that we have received by learning the word of God by praying by constantly bearing fruit by constantly being in communication with God we all possess knowledge right but with the knowledge we have we need to also understand how to apply that knowledge wherever needed how to apply that wisdom and that is the difference between knowledge and wisdom you can possess knowledge by learning by reading by learning by reading books by communicating with people but wisdom doesn't we don't gain wisdom like that we gain wisdom only by the constant communication with God by communicating with God by being online with God by being in prayer you understand what the will of God is you understand how to apply the knowledge that we have received from God so that Holy Spirit is needed inside us that empowerment of the spirit the discernment of the spirit is needed for every believer in Jesus Christ on how to apply the knowledge that we possess so here Paul says be filled with the knowledge of his will so how or what knowledge of will is Paul talking about first Timothy chapter two so what is God's knowledge or what is the knowledge of his will that Paul is talking about in first Timothy two four fun thing that Paul mentions is God's will is to desire or God's will is that all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth he wants all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth the knowledge of the very truth that is mentioned in the scriptures or come to the knowledge of the word of God God's will is that all men every man in this world to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth so the church of Colossae he praised to God that they will share this gospel that they have received from Epaphras and they will share this knowledge to everywhere to wherever access wherever places they have access and so that eventually through that sharing of the gospel they will come to the knowledge of the truth what is another will that God wants every believer to have or for this is the will of God in first Thessalonians four three Paul says for this is the will of God your sanctification to possess holiness to exhibit holiness that's another will of God or that's God it's God's will to exhibit holiness to exhibit sanctification to be sanctified to possess holiness in our walk with the Lord in our everyday walk of the Lord first we mentioned God desires all men to be saved secondly we mentioned the will of God is our sanctification or our holiness thirdly we see the knowledge of his will what is the knowledge of his will Ephesians five seventeen to nineteen understand what the will of the Lord is Paul says verse eighteen of Ephesians five do not get drunk with wine for this is dissipation but be filled in the spirit or be filled with the spirit another will of God we see be filled with the spirit and what does that do we speak to one another in sams and hymns and spiritual songs singing and making melody with your heart to the Lord so another will of God we see be filled with the spirit and this filling of the spirit needs to happen constantly as we bear fruit we should be constantly be filled with the spirit and that feeling should lead us to speak to one another in sams and hymns and spiritual songs singing and making melody with your heart to the Lord in the Old in the New Testament context when Paul talks to them they only had the Old Testament as the Bible so when Paul talks to the church at Ephesus Paul is saying speak to one another in sams all the samites you have received all the sams that you have received speak to one another making melody to God for the edification of the church hymns and spiritual songs singing and making melody with your heart to the Lord so what does that represent that represents unity that represents worship that represents praise that represents thanksgiving all these will be will happen when you be filled in the spirit and when you speak to one another in Sam so that is the importance of worship also that we see when we sing songs when we sing hymns when we praise God it represents that we are being filled with the spirit and we are making melody to the heart of the Lord so that we worship in unity and that eventually glorifies God another will of God first Thessalonians five eighteen we see rejoice always pray without ceasing in everything give thanks for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus another will of God what is the knowledge of his will his will is to rejoice always every time rejoice no matter what your circumstances in spite of circumstances despite your circumstances be be rejoicing every time be happy always be joyful always pray without ceasing as we see Paul if in all of his epistles he has not ceased to pray for whichever church he's writing this epistles to in this epistle also he says I have not ceased to pray for you or we have not ceased to pray for you that should be a quality of us also we should have also we should possess that quality also to pray without ceasing rejoice always and in everything whatever benefits that we have received from the Lord or even if we have not received anything in everything give thanks for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus having a heart of gratitude having a heart of thankfulness being thankful to God for whatever he's done in our life being thankful to God for all the benefits he has given or for all the blessings he has showered upon us that's why he was Sam 103 Sam says forget not all his benefits bless the Lord oh my soul bless his holy name bless the Lord oh my soul forget not all his benefits when we should always be thankful for all the benefits that we receive from the Lord and we should rejoice always whether you receive benefits or not be always joyful rejoice always in any circumstance you are whatever circumstance you have or you are rejoice always and pray without ceasing that praying without ceasing indicates the constant relationship we have with our Lord Jesus Christ that constant that consistent relationship or the consistent relation we have with God represents our bears the fruit of praying without singing if you cease to pray that means there is a there is a stop or there is a line that has cut your relationship with God but if you pray without ceasing that indicates that your relationship continues you're going forward with that relationship with God and that's why Paul says pray without ceasing that communication needs to happen every day in your life that communication that needs to consistently happen when you pray without ceasing and in everything give thanks for this is God's will for you in Jesus Christ so we saw around four things what is the knowledge of his will his will is for all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth of God secondly we saw the will of God the knowledge of his will is our sanctification our holiness that we should walk holy in the presence of God when we walk in this world we should carry the holiness of God in us so that we can also be holy in our walk thirdly we saw to be filled with the spirit the knowledge of his will is to be filled with the spirit so that we could speak to one another in sams and hymns and in spiritual songs making melody with our heart to the Lord and fourthly we saw to rejoice always his will is to rejoice always pray without ceasing and in everything give thanks to the Lord and this is the knowledge of his will that every believer in Christ Jesus should exhibit should possess so as I said before the force teachers they crept into this church of Colossae and they were trying to tell the church that they need to gain a special knowledge so this faith in Christ alone is not enough but rather they need to gain a special knowledge no sis in the Greek word I don't know they need to gain or possess a special knowledge in addition to the faith which they have put in Jesus Christ without this special knowledge they cannot gain heaven or they cannot enter heaven so that is what the force teachers that crept into this church of Colossae were trying to tell the church in Colossae and they got confused the church at Colossae got confused and that is why Paul wants to confirm the real gospel or the true gospel here that he's keep on praying for the church to gain the knowledge of his will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding you don't need a special knowledge but your faith in Christ alone should give you the knowledge that you require from the word of God when you consistently when you constantly learn the word of God in truth the constant communication with God will fill you with the knowledge of his fill and who does that the Holy Spirit fills you with the knowledge of his fill and remember when we see you may when he when we read that word be filled be filled means be controlled by filling it's not just literal filling but rather that metaphor is used so that he tries to mean to be controlled by be filled means be controlled by be filled by the spirit means be controlled by the spirit the spirit then leads you it's not your selfish interest it's not your desires but rather the desires of the spirit is carried out when you walk in the manner of the Lord when you walk with the spirit so remember that when Paul says you may be filled with the knowledge of his will this knowledge that we have received from God leads us or the knowledge of his will that we have received from God controls us then our only desire is to carry out the will of God not the will of man not our desire not our pleasures not our will would rather when we are filled with the knowledge of his will when we are controlled by the knowledge of his will our only desire will be to carry out the will that we have received to carry out the knowledge that we received and walk in a way that pleases God so just remember that and that's what one scholar said right knowledge leads to right behavior unless you receive the right knowledge you cannot exhibit a right behavior so that's why the scholar says right knowledge always leads to right behavior or it leads to transformation in our character so remember it's not just the church of Colossae the global church our church needs to be filled with the knowledge of his fill every day of our life not just when we got saved not when not just when we got baptized in water and in spirit but rather every day of our life we need to be filled or we need to be controlled by the knowledge of his will and without the knowledge of his will remember we cannot lead a successful Christian life this similar phrase that we read verse nine filled with this knowledge of his will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding we see in Old Testament too just want to quickly mention where we see that Isaiah we don't need to read I'll just read it Isaiah chapter eleven verses two and three the spirit of the Lord will rest on him the spirit of wisdom and understanding the spirit of counsel and strength the spirit of knowledge and the fear of the Lord there the word there the verse is talking about Jesus Christ the Messiah so Isaiah is saying the spirit of the Lord will rest on him the spirit of wisdom and understanding the spirit of counsel and strength the spirit of knowledge and fear of the Lord so he gives a definition or he gives a an attribute of the Holy Spirit the Holy Spirit is a spirit of wisdom and understanding the Holy Spirit is a spirit of counsel and strength and the Holy Spirit is a spirit of knowledge and fear of the Lord what what a beautiful words what a beautiful verse that describes the attribute or quality of the Holy Spirit we all have received this Holy Spirit it is a spirit of or he is a spirit of wisdom and understanding he is a spirit of counsel and strength he guides us he gives us counsel he strengthens us he gives us wisdom he gives us understanding he gives us knowledge and all these attributes that the Holy Spirit leads us to the fear of the Lord and then Isaiah says he will delight in the fear of the Lord he's talking about Jesus and he will not judge by what is icy nor make a decision but what is ears heard the spirit gives us discernment Holy Spirit gives us discernment another Old Testament verse which we see where we see knowledge wisdom and understanding is Exodus chapter thirty one verses two see I have called by name Basilale the son of Uri the son of her or the tribe of Judah I have filled him with the spirit of God and wisdom understanding knowledge and all kinds of craftsmanship so here Moses is talking about building of the tabernacle and he's saying he's called name Basilale the son of Uri and filled him with spirit of God and wisdom understanding knowledge and all kinds of craftsmanship the Holy Spirit is a spirit of God and he gives us wisdom knowledge understanding even to build a tabernacle Basilale needed the spirit of God so remember what's the importance of Holy Spirit in our day to day life to build a tabernacle Moses is saying God called Basilale and God filled him with the spirit of God and wisdom understanding knowledge and craftsmanship another verse first King chapter seven verses fourteen there he's talking about the building of Solomon's temple he was a widow's son from the tribe of Naphtali and his father was a man of tyre a worker in bronze and he was filled with wisdom understanding and skill for doing any work in bronze so he came to King Solomon and performed all his work to to build Solomon's temple he ram from tyre needed wisdom understanding and skill so even in their day to day life the Old Testament saints had an understanding that they need that they needed the Holy Spirit without the Holy Spirit they cannot carry out their daily task even not just being spiritual but rather even to carry out their daily task they needed the spirit of God and that's why in Old Testament we see even the Old Testament people for their craftsmanship for the to display their craftsmanship they needed the Holy Spirit of wisdom understanding and knowledge we some of us might know the Greek word of wisdom is Sophia there is a Sophia school in Cote d'Amont so wisdom in Greek is called Sophia and wisdom is a perception with discernment remember that it is it is not just knowledge as I said before but rather where do you apply that knowledge how do you apply that knowledge and that is wisdom wisdom is not knowledge what differs wisdom or what makes wisdom different from knowledge is that wisdom is where wisdom means where you apply the knowledge that you have and how do you apply the knowledge that you have and in biblical context wisdom is always for our practical living God gives us wisdom the spirit of God gives us wisdom so that you can live a life worthy of the Lord you can live a life walk a life worthy of our calling and election and remember whatever knowledge that we receive from the word of God this knowledge is not to increase our intellect or be filled in our intellect but rather whatever we receive whatever we learn whatever we listen to should lead us into a life walking in holiness life walking worthy of how God has called us so it should lead us in a practical Christian life worthy of our calling and election for the benefit of the glory of God and then when he says knowledge of his will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding another verse that came to my mind was Proverbs nine verses ten I hope you all know that fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom and the knowledge of the Holy One is understanding so there he differentiates Solomon differentiates between wisdom and understanding what is wisdom the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom wisdom starts with the fear of the Lord and what is understanding the knowledge of the Holy One the knowledge of God is understanding and the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom another verse to note down Proverbs nine ten what is wisdom and what is understanding Solomon says the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom and the knowledge of God or knowledge of the Holy One he mentions God as Holy One the knowledge of the Holy One is understanding when we receive that knowledge of the Holy One that knowledge should lead us to walk in holiness that knowledge that knowledge should lead us to conduct our life in a holy manner of the Lord Colossians one ten then says so that you walk in a manner worthy of the Lord to please him in all respects bearing fruit in every good work and increasing in the knowledge of God so what should all this lead to and whatever I said before whatever knowledge that you receive the wisdom the understanding that you receive should lead you into four different aspects which Paul mentions in ten so should lead you in four different aspects you walk in a manner worthy of the Lord please God in all respects bearing fruit in every good work increase in the knowledge of God so the purpose of this knowledge the purpose of God given wisdom the purpose of the spiritual understanding is to walk like Jesus is to please God in everything that we do is to bear fruit in every good works that we do and is to increase in the knowledge of the Lord Ephesians four one we see therefore I prisoner of the Lord implore you to walk in a manner worthy of the calling with which you have been called so Paul mentions in Ephesians four one two to he implores the church at Ephesus to walk in a manner worthy of the calling there another word is used worthy of the calling here is Paul just says worthy of the Lord so worthy of the calling that we have received each of us have received a calling from the Lord and that's why we all are here in this sanctuary without being called we won't be here we were called by the Lord and why did God call us he called us so that we would walk in a manner worthy of the Lord or in a manner worthy of our calling and election which Peter mentions in the epistle Philippians chapter one twenty seven Paul says only conduct yourselves in a manner worthy of the gospel of Christ so we saw worthy of the Lord worthy of the calling of the Lord thirdly we see worthy of the gospel of Christ we we mentioned about or we heard about the gospel last class we should walk a life or we should walk a walk worthy of the gospel of Christ Paul says so that whether I come and see you or remain absent I will hear of you that you are standing firm in one spirit so why should we walk worthy of the gospel of Christ so that we will stand firm in one spirit the spirit is a spirit of unity so in one spirit with one mind striving together for the faith of the gospel so there is a purpose to walk worthy of the Lord or there is a purpose of walking with the Lord for the sake of the gospel and what is that purpose Paul says to stand firm in one spirit to stand firm in the unity of the spirit to stand firm with one one mind even though we all are different parts of the body of Christ we are all we all form the body of Christ we should all have one mind right even though we are all different parts of the body we can be an ear or any other sense or any other organ of the body but we should only have one mind we should only think alike we should not think differently but all of us should think with one mind and Paul says we should strive together for the faith of the gospel the faith that is being produced by this gospel we should strive together in unity for that faith first Thessalonians two twelve another way another verse where Paul talks about walking so that you would walk in a manner worthy of the God who calls you into his own kingdom and glory why should you walk worthy of your calling so that you would glorify God another function or another attribute of walking in a manner worthy of the God it's God who calls us into his kingdom God has called each one of us into his kingdom when we receive that calling our responsibility is to glorify God so I mentioned I think three or four things we should walk in a manner worthy of the Lord so that in Ephesians four one says worthy of the calling with which you have been called walk in a manner we should walk in a manner because God called us we should walk in a manner worthy of the gospel of Christ because we the purpose is to stand firm in one spirit with one mind striving together for the faith of the gospel why should we walk in a manner worthy of the gospel so that we will stand in unity in one spirit in one mind together for the faith of the gospel to produce this faith when the outside world sees us we should only have one spirit we should only have one mind and we should strive together work hard for the faith of the gospel another verse where Paul mentions about walking a manner worthy of God is for his glorification he has called each one of us to his kingdom for his own glory and then Paul says please God in all respects so Romans eight eight we know that verse in your flesh you cannot please God that's what Romans eight eight we say Paul says and those who are in the flesh cannot please God another verse Hebrews eleven six Paul the writer of Hebrews says and without faith it is impossible to please him for he who comes to God must believe that he is and he is a reward of those who seek him so if you are in your flesh you cannot please God if you don't have faith you cannot please God so what is the opposite of that you should be in your spirit you cannot walk in the flesh but rather you have to walk in the spirit to please God and without faith it is impossible to please God so you should have faith and this faith is a gift of God a gift of God God rewards you with this faith and with this faith you can please God so without faith you cannot please God and without who are in the flesh or those who are in the flesh cannot please God so you should be walking according to the spirit you cannot walk according to the desires of your flesh but rather you should walk according to the spirit if you walk in the spirit you can please God and if you have faith it is possible to please God or you can please God with faith so that you come to God with a faith or with belief that who he is what is the faith that you should have you should have faith on who God is you should have a right understanding about God and God rewards those who have faith or those who seek him if you seek God with the right understanding of God if you seek God with the right knowledge of God if you seek God with the right wisdom of God if you seek God with the right understanding of God God will reward you and that's what the writer of Hebrews says then Paul says bearing fruit in every good work so we saw walk in a manner worthy of the Lord we saw pleasing God in all respects and thirdly bearing fruit in every good work so you should walk in a manner worthy of the Lord so that it glorifies God and that fruit that is produced by you should be in all your good works so fruit remember fruit is a byproduct of our works when we walk in a manner worthy of the Lord we all produce fruit the fruit of the spirit and we will see different fruit that the New Testament authors mention one fruit that Paul mentions in first Corinthians sixteen fifteen now I urge you brethren you know that the household of Stephanas and they were the first fruits of Akiah so you sharing you share the gospel of Jesus Christ when you share the gospel that is the fruit produced by the faith you have inside you the faith inside you that you have received from Jesus Christ leads you to the first fruit and that first fruit is to share the gospel with the outside world Hebrews thirteen fifteen through him then let us continually offer up a sacrifice of praise which is the fruit of lips the fruit of lips second fruit Paul mentioned or the writer of Hebrews mentions through God let us continually offer up a sacrifice of praise a sacrifice of praise on our lips that is another fruit that we need to produce Romans fifteen verses twenty six contribution please to make a contribution for the poor among the saints in Jerusalem giving for the Lord not just giving praise not just giving thanks but rather giving money giving offering giving tithes giving money spending your money for the Lord that is a fruit that every believer needs to have Hebrews chapter twelve eleven at discipline all discipline for the moment seems not to be joyful but sorrowful but those who have been trained by it yields the peaceful fruit of righteousness yielding the fruit of righteousness is a fruit that all believers need to produce we should produce the fruit of righteousness and finally Galatians chapter five verses twenty two a verse that we all know the fruit of the spirit is life love joy peace patience kindness goodness faithfulness gentleness and self-control and those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified the flesh with its passions and desires so how do we produce this fruit when we know God more knowing God I don't I don't mean to know about God but rather experientially knowing God that is the experience that we all need to have we can know about God when we read Bible when we read different books but knowing God means you need to have that personal relationship with God that personal experience with God if you don't have that personal experience with God you cannot know God that's the difference between knowing God and knowing about God I've told this many times in this pulpit itself knowing God means you should experience I've told this many times in this pulpit itself, knowing God means you should experientially knowing God. In your spirit, you recognize what the Holy Spirit wants from you, and you walk, uh, the walk, uh, walk in a life or walk a life worthy of your calling and election, walk a life worthy of the manner God has called you by walking in holiness. So you experientially know God, you experience God in every day of our life, in every aspect of your life, every zone of your life, you experientially know God. And that is what knowing God means in a New Testament context. And when we get to know God more, automatically we will walk with the Lord. Enoch walked with the Lord, right? Hanukkah devotod kura narun, he walked with the God, with the Lord, he walked with God. How can we walk with God? Only when you know God. Unless you know God, you cannot walk with God. So remember, whatever we learned today, we learned about unity of the spirit. The spirit was producing the fruit of love among the church of Colossae. And we learned about the difference between knowledge and wisdom and understanding. Knowledge is about knowing things, wisdom is how you apply that knowledge, or where do you apply that knowledge? And understanding is the knowledge of the Holy One. Knowledge of God is understanding. And we all learned about the will of God, his will of, the will of God is that all men need to be saved. And another will of God, we saw the holiness of his saints. Third will of God, to be filled with the spirit. Fourth will of God, to rejoice always, pray without ceasing, and in everything, give thanks to the Lord. We saw in Old Testament, where we talk about knowledge, wisdom and understanding. And then the fear of the Lord is beginning of wisdom, and the knowledge of the Holy One is understanding. And how can we please God? Only with faith we can please God, and only if you walk according to the spirit that you can please God. And Paul mentions, to walk worthy of the calling that we have received, we need to stand firm in one spirit, with one mind, and strive together for the faith of the gospel, which eventually leads to glorifying God. And we saw the various fruits that we, uh, see in the scripture. Sharing the gospel is one fruit, continually offering a sacrifice of praise is another fruit. And, uh, thirdly, we saw giving money for the poor and giving money for the church, giving money to God. Spending our resources for the, for the sake of God is a fruit, and yielding a fruit of righteousness. And finally, we saw the fruit of the spirit, the nine characteristics that we need to possess as a believer of Jesus Christ. And lastly, we saw, we need to walk a, and walk in a manner worthy of the Lord, only when we know God. Unless you know God, you cannot walk in a manner worthy of the Lord. So let us experientially know who God is and what God has done in the past, in the present, and what he is going to do in the future. And let that knowledge leads, or let that knowledge lead us to walk in a worthy of a calling and election that we received. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful morning you've given us, Lord God. Thank you for all the blessings you've showered upon us. As we worship you in spirit and in truth, speak to each one of us, Lord God. Let you be glorified, you alone be magnified, you alone be exalted, Lord God. And as the worship service progresses, Lord, Holy Spirit, we need your presence, Lord. We need to experience your presence in this morning time. We come to the foot of the cross, we repent of our sins, Lord, forgive our sins, Lord, make us holy this morning. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.